Quarter. Like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, March 11th, 2021. The time is 3:01. We put on our due to health concerns this meeting will be accessible by following the instructions we put on our website. Please say here after I call your name. Councilmember Woo.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Abersole.
Here.
Councilmember Nitson.
Here.
Councilmember Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Frannich.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg has an excused absence that he told us prior to it. He might be able to join later on, he said. From staff, we have Public Works Director Jeff Langhill.
Here.
We have City Administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
We have our Assistant City Clerk Josh Decker.
Here.
And with us, we have our attorney Daniel Kim.
Here.
Great. Please. Let's see. Josh, you want to be, you want to sing the, or you want to say the Pledge of Allegiance tonight? I love people putting people on the spot. Yeah, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, two topics today. We have the Sports Complex Phase 1A lease agreement that we, that Bob was able to send out to you. Daniel's reviewed it extensively. Bob, Daniel, Jeff and I have been working with the Y. As you know, we had an MOU that we worked on for a year. And then due to COVID, this has taken quite a bit longer. It's very detailed. So you're familiar with a lot of it because some of you past council, it's similar, it's built on the MOU. So a lot of it is, is the same. You know, what we might do is have Daniel or Jeff talk about the, the points that are of most interest, but I'm going to let. You know, really Jeff and Daniel. Run this part of it and then. Kind of get to the, the just of it, the most important parts, Daniel or Jeff or Bob. And then just raise your hand if you have questions. Yes, Councilmember Hines.
Yeah, I guess along that line, if you could give us a little background of where the Y is. And where we are going into this, I think it'd be helpful. That, that letter in there would, would suggest maybe in the next 15 years, we ought to think about this topic. Like, hey, these guys are really on the ropes, to put it mildly. So any, any background info that you could give us would really help.
Okay.
Particularly relative to the situation and the timing element, is it consistent with where this thing is heading?
Right. Did. Bob, the, the Y, the, the letter that the Y had sent us out. Prior. Did we, did we, we didn't send that to council, did we, or did we?
I'm unmuting. We did not, Mayor.
Okay. All right. I'll just let you know that. For the, this is a letter that actually the Y sent to part of their membership. And then there was one he sent the other day. That will, you know, that obviously we couldn't send it to you when we just got it yesterday. But basically Charlie says over the last 10 months, they've had, they're deeply. It, it's been tough. Basically, they've. They had $75 million operating budget and it's dwindled down to 34 million. They had 150,000 members. They have 51,000 now. So they're really. They in total 1,900 full and part-time staff were laid off. So I believe the King County Y basically asked, or King County kind of asked to bail out the King County Y. That's how hard it's been hurt. So they, they had, they're currently serving 650 youth. In their childcare program. And. It's, it's been devastating. They've, they've really expressed a lot of, a lot of pain with where they're at. And their most recent letter that they sent. Is yesterday. It says, Dear America, I have appreciated our joint commitment to build what we are calling the Gig Harbor Sports Complex. I love our shared vision that we are creating a much-needed outdoor space for youth and families to gather for recreation. I believe this will be a great gift to Gig Harbor community. In our last session, we agreed that we would do everything in our power to complete this project by December 31st, 2024. It is our intent that the YMCA appears in Kitsap Counties will begin in earnest once we sign the lease. Proved by the Y's Board of Directors. Our efforts to raise the 6.8 million necessary to construct this project. We know that the campaign would take at least two years to complete. We will take, that will take us into 2023 or even 2024 before we begin the actual construction. As we discussed. If it becomes clear that we are not able to complete that target, the city can seek another partner to complete the project. And one thing I might add. We asked the Y many, many months ago, you know. Are you really wanting to do this? Because we heard some pretty negative things from one of the persons and. The board is just, you know, really worrying about just trying to stay afloat. So, you know, our, our point was to get to the agreements being signed. We, we want people to feel comfortable. We don't want to lock someone into something that they don't want to do. That's why I never have answered my work phone. So, um, so we gave them a way out as well as us. We don't want them to. To, to be reluctant to sign something that. And, and hold, hold something over them. So we basically have said that either the, and we deserve it too as well. If it's a two-way street, if we let the Y come out, get out of this arrangement. In June of 2023, if they haven't gotten the necessary steps, we deserves the same thing. The present council or administration deserve the same thing. So in the lease, we've actually put where either party can pull out in June of 2023. With no monetary payment due to the other party. I, I don't know if, if they would sign it otherwise and we need it, we need someone to be glad that they want to do this. So anyway, I'm just letting you know that on the 2023. We recognize that both parties are eager to complete the project. But we also recognize the impact the pandemic has had our community. And the Y. We intend to uphold our commitments. But we have to be transparent that we are working to overcome a devastation the pandemic has had us put in. This letter is to serve that we are ready to take the next step forward and to conduct a fundraising campaign. Thank you, Mayor, and I look forward to the continued partnership with you and the city of Gig Harbor. And, you know, I'll just let Bob or Jeff touch on. Other thoughts that we've had. We've, we've given them more time because of the, of the predicament. Just one moment. Spencer, Bob, you know, you've talked to Charlie, so have you, Jeff and Jesse. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, you've said it very well, Mayor. I think that both the letters, I think thoroughly explain their situation. They are obviously needing to recover for all call the operational side. Before they can even contemplate wanting to go off for the capital campaign. It, it behooves them to do that. Partly because obviously they just, they have to show the public that they're committed to the operations. Not necessarily our sports complex at the moment. So I think, I think it's a, you know, it's a reasonable approach. Obviously, it's, it's, you know, there's some concerns we all have and we've expressed those to Charlie. And others representing the YMCA. But, you know, we, we, so that's why the, what you'll see today is they've asked for, and we want to talk to council about it. It's a seminal issue, not as. Do we want to extend this on the lease agreement? And if so, what would be that timeline? The Y's offered up, but they think it's a reasonable timeline, but obviously we need to discuss that with council.
Right. So we've offered some more time for them to, to, because of this. But we've also told them six months ago that we don't want this to delay our 1B. And so we've, we've said that, you know, we want 1B to continue. And so that, a lot of the sticky part was having to pay for part of the grading of 1B, as you remember. So they've accepted that, you know, we, we will probably start 1B. And 1B will be graded before their part is graded. We also told them that. We want them to build that concession stand that we talked about. And so they may have to build that before they start the fields. Because that was, that was on their dime. But that they're going to have to build that first, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but then. To be supportive of them, we would maintain it. We would, we're not, not saying we would open up the concession stand. But we would maintain the restrooms until the time that they have their fields open and then they would take that over.
Right.
Go ahead, Jeff.
They say that, that should be included in the version of the, of the lease that you have, that was provided to you. On Friday, I believe. So that information and, and even some of the information like the mayor was saying and Bob was referring to. For the timing, we have other clauses that we have in draft format that isn't even in the version you have. But we are ready and willing to share those with you tonight to, to set those dates. So it can hopefully better accommodate the Y's schedule, but not go so far out that we can't get something done. Or work together to change our minds and proceed in a different direction if the YMCA isn't going to be the partner that. Can come to the table in a timely manner.
Great. Councilmember Abersole.
Yes, thank you. I just got a couple of thoughts. I, I would say that the 2023 timeline sounds fair. I have a lot of confidence that of the 100,000 people that dropped their membership from the Y. Will most likely, I would say 80% of those folks will probably most likely sign back up. You know, I've let my body go to COVID and I'm sure as soon as I can get back in a pool, I will be running to jump back in and. And I assume that, you know, as more people are moving to Gig Harbor, that 20% deficit will probably get made up. I'm sure a lot of people might not sign up because they never use their membership. Because that happens, but I'm confident that a lot of the membership will come back. And I think that this entire commitment by the Y and the city is a great recruitment tool. For the YMCA to get members to join. So. I don't feel worried that we're going to lose the Y. I think it's a great institution. I think it's a huge institution. It's an international institution. And as everyone is being dealt the blow by COVID, I believe that in time we will bounce back and things will get back to normal. And life will resume the way it was before and we won't have this problem. I just hope it's sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Thank you. We are social people, human, human race. So I think they do want to. Exercise together somewhat. Councilmember Woo.
Yes, on page four, Phase 1B. I thought I heard you say that they were still going to pay for the grading. But this calls attention to a revised section. Where the clearing and grading is no longer included. Is that included somewhere else?
Jeff, if, if, either they're paying for the grading or in a roundabout way, it's confusing. Jeff, do you want to explain that?
Mayor, this is Bob. What I suggest, maybe we should go through the document, the piece by piece. We cover all the topics. If that's okay with Councilmember Woo, I would suggest that.
Sure, but, but that is a big question. So if it's not too hard, could you answer that for, for us all, Jeff?
Yeah, well, that, that specific item is something that, as you mentioned, Mayor, that they were going to perform. For on behalf of the city, the Phase 1B grading. And now in order for us to do the work, we're going to end up paying for that. And so that was a part of the items that we acknowledged that we would end up having to pay for and they would no longer need to pay. It's, it's not captured somewhere else that I know of.
Okay, I thought we were working on all the.
Okay. That was it.
Kind of news to you, you know, we, we, we put all those walls in. To keep the vegetation and then we were going to pay for, one person was going to pay for the walls and one person was going to pay for the grading. And then that didn't work out because we didn't know what the walls were going to cost. So we got left where the city's paying for the grading.
The city's paying. It's correct. The city is paying for the grading of 1B. That's the way it sits in this version today. And we'll have to also pay for some of the limited amount of grading on 1A just to make the, just to be able to. Finish our 1B project, we have to do some slopes into 1A and that's going to cause some grading on 1A. And, and the portion of the walls. For the site that are going to be south of that boundary line between 1A and 1B. This is part of the, the money that, that list of items that the city. Worked with the Y on to show them that we are still committed to this and need to move ourselves forward separate and before 1A.
Okay. I was a big stickler on that, so that one got away from me.
Well, it's, it's called out on the first page with the revision, so I, I think it's a good idea. Let's just get the damn thing up on the screen and start going through it.
Did you have a certain question pertaining to a certain page that, that we can cover, Councilmember Hines? Or did you have a general question?
Just a general question. I, I, I agree with Councilmember Abersole's. Hope. That this is all going to work out well and, but we have nothing in terms of. Balance sheets, incomes, nothing. This, this is a pure faith discussion, I think, in terms of what they can pull off. Okay? And I guess my only comment would be. We need to be thinking about what we would do if this thing did explode. And then, by the way, all it would take is another round of. Of coronavirus variant and this thing could explode in a heartbeat because this thing is, is predicated on home run timing right now, I think. I, I can't imagine going any faster than what you're talking about. Okay? That is design ending in 2023, construction in 2024, particularly given their financial situation. So. I guess as we go through this, I would think that we would want to be very careful. That we don't lockers, we don't paint ourselves into a corner, just put it that way. And the reason I say that is, is going on faith, and by the way, faith is wonderful, but you can't take it to the bank. And that's kind of where I'm at in this discussion. So I'm, I'm cheering all the way, but also we really, we really got to think about. Our survival at the end of this thing.
I can, I can agree with your concerns. Councilmember Markley.
Thank you. I do share the, the hope and faith of my fellow council people, but also, also the concerns. Just a quick question, and, and this is, you know, I real, I so want this to happen with the YMCA, but. Just, has there, has there been any other entity, national or otherwise, that has expressed interest in partnering with us on the sports complex? Or has it only ever just been the YMCA? Like, would there be another person or another company. Waiting in the wings if this fell that would like be ready to just take it on and go? Or is there just been no other interest at all or no other, you know, offers at all? And you don't have to name names. I'm just wondering, I'm just curious if there's been any other people interested in partnering with the city on the sports complex.
Well, I know two people, two entities that come to mind, but. Jeff, Bob?
Yeah, it's probably the same two areas. I mean, the, the ones that would probably be the most interested are already surrounding us. Penmet Parks and Peninsula School District, but we, we haven't had those discussions at all with any of them. But.
The other piece I want to ask is maybe Councilmember Markley's referring to this. When they, we had these discussions previously and it was, YMCA was, was selected, if you will. Were there any other parties that were being considered at that same time? Or I'd been discussed with, maybe that's another way to look at this issue because we don't want to, you know, necessarily discuss what could be in the future. We had to go there, but you know, maybe there was partners or potential partners from previous discussions.
That's, that, that's what I was wondering is, you know, was the YMCA the only person in the beginning when this came before, you know, citizens and then came before the city? Were they the only ones? I, and I, I think Penmet, I think they had, you know, come forward, but I, that's what I was asking, you know. Were there anyone, was there anyone else besides the Y that had had previous discussions about this? That might be interested again, should this all fall apart, you know, I, I, I don't want it to, obviously none of us do, but. Just trying to, you know, think, think ahead, you know, just.
At that time, there wasn't, you know, Councilmember Perot was in, was the only one of us that was elected at that time. And he was involved with the Y. And so he, he with the Y were putting this together. So, and then they had the support of the soccer field, the lacrosse field groups, soccer groups, the lacrosse groups. That basically were paying over $100,000 and so, and at that, at that time, you know, Penmet was thinking of doing this massive dome. That got scaled way back. So, and we, and we didn't know of another school at that time that might need field. So at that time, no. But I agree that, you know, there should be, in a way, there should be something in your, in your other pocket that you have something to fall back on. As Councilmember Hines and all of us are concerned with. So I think, I think that there, there should, no matter what, there should be. Some discussion of, you know, of they have to do what's best for them. And we probably need to have a. Alternative plan if something doesn't, if it's something doesn't really happen with the Y, we can't just wait until the end and find out. And then not have been working towards a Plan B if it goes that way. Okay, Jeff.
All right. Do you want me to show my screen? I can do that.
Sure.
I apologize in advance. I had the version I have on my screen that you'll see has highlights on it. So ignore, please ignore those highlights. They're mostly just for. My reference on some of these items. So let me get to the beginning here. I'm going to make it larger. Can everyone see my screen? Okay? Okay. So. Yeah, Daniel did a very nice summary. This summary, by the way, was completed and the version was completed as you saw on the date. It was the third, I believe, of March. Yeah. So there's one other version that we've, that Daniel and the mayor and Bob and I have. Looked at and it's, it's from two days ago. So I, I might, I have it open on my screen also. I might jump over to that. If, if we come to a point where we have to include the discussion there. So.
So Jeff, I'm happy to chime in here too.
Okay.
A lot of this is stuff that, you know, that I had worked on and, you know. If I recall correctly, council, you, you've seen the majority of this. And we had a discussion about a lot of it. However, there are revised terms since our last discussion. I've included in this document in front of you right now, a note where each of those revised portions are. And so what I thought we would do, we can talk about anything you want to, but we could go to where those revised sections live. Talk about those because that's what's changed since, you know, the last time we talked. And then add layer on to that, the ones that happened very recently that, that were since this was created and really just got finalized in the last day or so.
I think that's, I think that's a great idea because it's too many pages to get, go through line by line.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So Jeff, if you want to just scroll until you see the first new section, I bolded it for each, there you go.
Sure, just, well, Frannich, did you have a?
Well, I just want to make sure that we're not, that the one Jeff's saying, this, this is the one that I've seen. That the one that came out two days ago, just please call out any changes between the two-day-go one and this one.
Absolutely. And so what we'll do is we'll go through this summary document because they, they were largely separate changes. So we'll go through all of these and then I will specifically go through all the additional changes. And so when we're done, you'll have the full scope and you'll know. So yeah, I appreciate that and absolutely will do. And so, so the first change, well, and now that I say that, this one actually kind of touches on both sides. But the, the city has agreed to pursue an extension of the RCO grant timeline. For a, a couple of years and that's listed in some of the new revisions as well as 2024, December 31st, 2024. That's the new completion deadline for the improvements, for the one Phase 1A improvements. And so we've made it very clear that the RCO grant timeline will be requested to be extended, but may not be extended. We don't have control over that, but we, it is our grant, so we, we can request that. So we've made it clear that we'll try to do that. And one important note that is in the most recent version and that would build on this is if the grant is not extended. And the construction deadline is 2024, December 31st, 2024. They'll lose the benefit of that grant and they will be required to fundraise the gap, the difference in losing that.
Let, let me be clear though, that the, the current RCO grant deadline is 2020, is sometime fall of 2022.
Correct.
And so what the request would be to RCO is to extend it two years out to essentially like Daniel said, December 31st, 2024. So if we, if RCO says no on our grant extension, then that $350,000 or whatever that number was. Is going to go away in August or September or whenever, October 2022.
And, and so these points were made to the Y, they understand that and those revisions are in the agreement. They'll review all the exact wording, but it's important that the construction deadline for our agreement with the Y will be December 31st, 2024. We will attempt to move the RCO deadline to hit that so that they continue to get the benefit of that $350,000 grant. If that does not happen, they still have a December 2024 deadline for construction. They will just then lose that grant money as a benefit. Councilmember Frannich, you went off mute?
Yeah. If it looks like. I, I know that that RCO grant is tied to the specific project, but. Is there any way since the city's already got that $540,000 locked up? That as a fallback, we could use it on a different project?
No. It's for. It's for.
For this project.
It, it's for synthetic turf fields with lighting. That's it.
Okay, Jeff, if you want to go to the next new term section, newer revised term section.
Oh, sorry.
There we go. Okay, and so this, this gets to a bigger picture change that happened. Jeff touched on it earlier. There are a number of provisions in here of things that the city is going to be responsible for. I've got to move my, there we go. So this is one of the things that the city is incorporating into the agreement as a, of a value add to them and the city will do. And so as Jeff explained earlier, for the period of time where the restrooms are constructed, but the rest of the improvements are not yet constructed. That the landlord, the city will maintain the restrooms. And that's because we'll have, I think we'll have Phase 1B operational and we'll want to be able to use those. So we'll take care of the, the maintenance of those while they finish off. And this is a component of further things that we'll get to here in a second that are being added to the agreement as city obligations. So we can go to the next highlight. So, so this, this is the, the same term. There were two sections that I thought it was appropriate to put this into. And so this is just simply the exact same item put in two locations so we can keep going. You want to just scroll just a little bit?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, the other direction.
Oh.
I think maybe there's just too much highlighting because those aren't new, right? Yeah, donations, that's not new. So city contributions, I apologize. So, so that, that's what we're looking at now.
Yeah, sorry, these are my highlights. I apologize.
Yeah, because I, I did the same thing as well. It's why I have it. So the city contribution section, this is a new section. This builds upon. This builds upon, uh, the restrooms item that we just talked about. These are items that the city is contributing to this effort that are being added to this agreement. And so each of those four bullets represents, um, requirements of the city. To basically, and Jeff, uh, you can clarify more for me, but to, uh, facilitate the city moving forward in advance. And, uh, teen up their project later without holding us back. And the approximate valuations are put there for your reference, that will not be included in the document and is not included in the document. Um, and so these items are, um, things that the city will have to do. So if you've got questions on what those are or how they should work, I think Jeff can answer those.
Uh, yeah, councilmember Franch.
Are those approximate value cost for the sewer line and the water line? Uh, based on twenty twenty numbers or twenty twenty one?
Twenty twenty one numbers for public works construction costs.
Good.
Councilmember Luke.
Why are they not being included in the contract, in the agreement, lease agreement?
I, I, I apologize if I misspoke, they, they, the, uh, the items are included, the approximate values are not. Because that can change and really, we're, the, the cities are agreeing to the action and not the value.
Why is that? Why don't we want to put in there how much this is gonna cost the city?
They're gonna change.
I think, sorry, go ahead. Well, I, I, for, for the same reason why we don't put in there how much this total phase one A project is gonna cost the YMCA. Originally, it was estimated at three point five and now YMCA is estimating what, six point eight, and it's gonna be more than that. And so I think the intent is that these are the items that will be built, these are the facilities that will be built. The cost is not the question, whether it's the YMCA paying for it to the city, because we know that the costs are really hard to identify at this point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Franch.
Well, yeah, uh, you know, following up on that, you don't want to have these numbers in. But if you, at the very first couple paragraphs up there, we do identify three point five million dollars. And I've always had a problem with this, and Daniel's always said that, well, the preceding language before the number. Uh, covers it, that they're gonna pay for the whole thing. So why is, why do we leave that three point five million dollar number in at the very beginning of the section? It didn't seem like a sticking point.
I don't remember where exactly that three point five million dollar number came from. Um, it was a very long time ago and I think the scope has constantly.
You're absolutely right, it has changed and that's why, it, I mean, it changed a year ago. And when I brought this up, where we're still using, it, it was up to over six million dollars. But we kept that three point five million dollar number in there and I always had a problem with it. And Daniel was always saying, well, you don't need to worry too much about what that number is. Because there's language that says they're gonna raise a minimum of this amount. Um, so I, I don't know, I mean, Daniel, can you explain why we would leave that three point five million dollars at the beginning of this?
Um, so, so, yeah, it, it, it's, it's in a couple of different places, three point eight five. I'm just looking back at my emails, I believe their attorney had a reason for that. Um, and if I can find it quickly, I will bring that up.
Well, if I can jump in, it says, um. Efforts to fully and completely fund not less than three point five million dollars.
But, r- r- and, and councilmember Franch is, is correct in, in his, in his, uh, memory of the conversations. The, the beginning, uh, says that it's anticipated to cost at a minimum, a minimum of, and so there's qualifying language and, and so I agree with you. If they would agree to put in a larger number, I think we can do that. They are, and so, so I'll, you know, end, end statement there. But, but if they don't, we are still protected, they're building the phase one A improvements, that'll be attached, they're required to fundraise it. So I agree with you, councilmember Franch, if, if they can put in the, the larger number, we can do that, they have been hesitant, hesitant to do that.
And I, I, I don't understand why, because you're saying that there's the qualifying language in there. That they're gonna pay for the whole thing, yet they want that three point five million dollar number in there and, uh, it just. It, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. I, I, I just, I don't, I, I, I know you're saying the qualifying language in there is what's gonna protect us. But I would just hate to see some lawsuit come out of this where a judge is gonna interpret that. Having that three point five million dollar number in there is representing something. When there's no, you know, I mean, it, it's totally outdated even today, let alone in the future.
Well, so a- again, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but, but let's, let's just, uh, keep the frame, framework of what we're dealing with here. This is a lease that they're committing to build improvements. It, it's not gonna matter whether it costs you three point eight five or fifteen, there's no out for them. For the identified improvements to not get made, to be built. So that this is not a fundraising agreement, this is a lease with a commitment to build improvements. So really that number is, it's, it's, it's on the side of everything that's going on in the legal agreement that we've got with them. We could, should.
So why don't we take that number out?
Well, no, I mean, I, I, I think the first question should be, let's update it to a more recent number, I think that's a fair question to ask and try to go for. Um, so let's ask him for it, and so councilmember Franch, I agree, let, let's ask that question, let's try to make that revision. Um, but again, this is not a fundraising commitment, a legal commitment to fundraise.
Councilmember Robison.
Yeah, just on page two here, it says obligation to complete fundraising in project. Tenant will use commercially reasonable and diligent efforts to fully and completely fund not less than three point five million dollars. So doesn't that language suggest at a minimum they have to pay three point five million and that number, you know, they can go higher, but they can't go lower?
Y- yes, and that's on the first page as well, and, and councilmember Franch's point is, is well taken. That if we know it's gonna be six million, why isn't that number six million? So I, councilmember Abelson, I agree with you as well, but, but I'm fine trying to get that number to be more accurate, because at this point, it is dated.
Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, I just lowered my hand, I, I, I guess that, I'm looking at that same sentence and, and I agree with, uh, councilmember Eversol. Called, it, it just seems to me, it just wants to says tenant will use commercially reasonable and diligent efforts. To fully fu- to fully and completely fund the project, not to, not less than three point five million dollars. That would handle it without saying what the project really costs in total, just hey, we're gonna fund the project period. In parents or whatever you want, not to, not less than three and a half million is fine and, and call it a day. And, and then the exceptions where we've agreed to do improvements in one A while we're doing one B. A list that we were just looking at, that's fine. But, uh, but I agree, there ought to be something in here that says they're really gonna fund the whole thing, the whole one, one A. With the exception of the items that we're providing.
Okay, proceed, Daniel. Or Jeff.
Okay, so, so, I mean, we, we've kind of been talking about it, but on the lower part of your screen. Phase one B, so the, the, the original phase one B section dealt all with that grading. And so that has been, that, excuse me, that language has been removed. And it talks about the city doing that work, and so that, that is just a clarification of that relationship. So we can move on to the next. Uh, maybe that was it. So, so, so then, then there were some additional ones, some of which we've talked about, and I have those here, so I will explain those to you. Um, so we can probably go off share screen for a moment, so we can all see each other if that's okay. So, um, the, one of the additional items that were, that was brought into the, uh, the document. I'll tell you the sections, um, in a moment, I'll tell you what we did first. Um, there was a require, there is now a requirement that the YMCA shall submit to the city. The necessary land use applications for phase one A by, uh, June thirty, twenty twenty three. Uh, the mayor identified this earlier, we, we brought this up. And we list those applications, ma- major site plan review, design review, critical area review, CIPA and binding site plan. And so, and then that is the juncture at which both parties have an out. So if they don't submit those applications by that date, either party can terminate, walk away without a financial, um, impact. And so the revisions to that, I pulled into two sections, um, both, um, section DA. And I'm pulling that up, uh, right now, sorry, one second. So D, section D is the termination option to purchase and fair market value section. And so I added a very first, uh, paragraph, which is now DA, jumped in front of everybody. That says exactly what I just read to you and you'll get this, um, and says that, uh, either party may terminate this agreement. With no monetary contribution or penalty, no option to purchase for either property. Because that, if you remember, there's a little bit of a dance back and forth depending on when somebody backs out. And no requirement to go through dispute resolution as outlined below, again, there was a detailed dispute resolution process. Uh, the necessary applications include at minimum the ones that I just read. So that was included there in termination and then it was included down below in section I. Uh, I, which is construction of phase one improvements in, uh, the permit section, which is ID. And that is also included there because it outlines the number of, what permits they need. And so that's not in the version that you have, that just, that just happened. So that, that provision was added in two places, councilmember Luke.
What is that date again?
Uh, July, oh, sorry, June thirty, twenty twenty three.
Thank you.
And so between when this gets signed and June thirty, twenty twenty three. They should be moving forward with both fundraising and getting the applications ready. And if they don't submit the applications on June thirty, twenty twenty three, either party can say we're done.
And the intent of that is to make sure that it, it, it's just a reasonableness. If they don't submit land use applications that were listed there by middle, by the middle of twenty twenty three. They're not gonna have time to go through the entire land use process and embark upon construction in spring of twenty twenty four. To be complete by end of twenty twenty four, so it's just trying to tie it all together to say, we're gonna know by middle of twenty twenty three. If you aren't at a point where you can submit land use applications, this project isn't gonna be constructed by the end of twenty twenty four.
W- w- one other timeline that will also be known then is whether or not the YAF grant will have been extended. Because that's after that deadline anyway, so it'll either be not on the table or it'll be at the, at the end construction time. So the, so the next thing that was added, um, and we've talked about this already. Is that there will be a phase one A construction deadline of December thirty first, twenty twenty four. We've talked about that a few different times, and so that's included in, um, section, uh, ID. So the completion date for the phase one A improvements, um, that's, um. So we put both the twenty twenty four date in there as well as the city's, um, commitment. To attempt to extend the YAF grant until that date. Though it says such extension is not guaranteed and will require approval from the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office. In order to receive and use the RCO grant funds on the project, tenant must complete the project within the RCO grant timeline for construction. If the RCO grant timeline is not met, tenant is responsible to fundraise an additional amount equal to the RCO grant. So that, i- i- if that three hundred fifty thousand dollars is taken off the table because of timelines. That is not something that would fall on the city's shoulders.
Councilmember Markley.
Oh, thank you, I, I was gonna lower my hand when Daniel went on, but, um, going back to the, to the last one. If, if we're gonna know by the, by the middle of twenty twenty three. Whether or not they're gonna be able to hit that June deadline. Why, I guess, I guess I'm just wondering why we would ju- still keep having it go out to that deadline. If it, if we're gonna know however many months in advance of that, if that's, if that deadline is even gonna happen or not, wouldn't the deadline go out the window? And we would just know, it, I mean, could we, I'm just saying like, if we needed to move on to something else, you know. If, if it's just gonna fall through and we know that, why do we have to keep that out, you know? What, I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't the?
That's the same question yesterday.
You know, I mean, wouldn't the deadline be sooner than that, like if we, if those permits are due or by a certain time? But that, so that's my question, you know, why, why does the deadline have to remain extended if we already know this is a done deal? It can't happen now because they're not gonna meet the timeline, couldn't it just end right there?
Or, that's how, yeah, so that's how it's written, so the June thirty, twenty twenty three. If they don't meet that deadline for the applications, the city can walk and move on and somebody.
Oh, okay, so the end date is still December, so if, so if they don't meet it in June, is, is that what you're saying, the permits are due in December?
Yeah, so let, let me just walk through those real quick.
Jeff's taking his head no, so I'm confused.
June thirty, twenty twenty three is applications for all of those different permits are due.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then they still have until December thirty first, twenty twenty four, a year and a half more. To then complete the actual construction itself. And so if they don't get their applications in, the city will be able to walk away a year and a half before the.
Okay, okay, gotcha, thank you.
They do hit that deadline and they get their applications in, everybody knows as of that moment. We're all on the same path for construction by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, eighteen months later. And that opportunity to walk away is gone for both parties, because they've done the substantial work to get the applications in. They will likely be substantially into their fundraising as well, because that takes time. But they'll have eighteen months to actually get the work done, um, by the end of the, uh, the construction deadline. Jeff, did I?
And then if they, and if they don't complete construction by then, then they lose that three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, grant. It was that, it was what you said earlier.
To that date, uh, they have to hit.
If they don't extend it.
Yeah, it, the YAF grant is next year, so that's very soon. So the, the chance, the chances that they meet the current deadline and, sorry Jeff, I mean, do correct me if I'm wrong. But if, it, the chances that they hit the current YAF grant deadline are, are very low because it's next year. And, you know, they're still.
Well, that's why we're asking for an extension, right? Or, we're gonna ask for two years?
Yes, and so we're gonna try to get that extension, we are not committing that that will in fact happen, because we can't say that, but we'll try to get it. And either way, this could move forward, they may have extra time and a three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Or they might have a really quick timeline and miss out on the, the three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you for clarifying, I'm trying to get the timeline straight in my head.
Absolutely.
Well, I even thought that there's, there's a chance by six months before June, June twenty twenty three. That if they haven't really actively fundraised, we should know six months before even that date, which is still a year. Two years from now, um, if they haven't done a lot, then we would know six months even before that date. Maybe there should be, um, even a, a six month before that date, but let's just, well, let's see where we go on the rest of this. Councilmember Abelson.
Yes, I'm reading on page, uh, I guess it's eighteen of thirty one.
Well, wait, I think you're jumping ahead of them.
I may be.
What, what do you got? Uh, what, what, are, are you in the, the lease itself or are you in the, uh?
I'm in the YMCA lease, yes.
Yeah, what, what section are you in?
Well, it's, uh, section C under.
What's it titled? O- ownership? No.
Uh, I'm not sure, I'm gonna have to scroll up a bunch.
But after that, let's stick with Daniel's time, Daniel's framework.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not sure what.
It's kind of hard to say.
Yeah, it's, but it's page eighteen.
What are the first three words of the paragraph that you're reading? I'll just search for it.
So it's excuse for non-performance.
Yeah, notwithstanding anything in this agreement.
Yeah, neither landlord nor tenant shall be excused for performing any obligation under this agreement. And any delay in his performance or any obligation under this agreement shall be excused if and so as long. As the performance of the obligations is prevented, delayed or otherwise hindered by acts of God. I would say the pandemic is an act of God. I would say the pandemic is an act of God. Um, does that language?
Well, actually, uh, if I could interrupt for a minute, it does say pandemic in there.
Is it?
Yes, it's the next uh couple lines down. Talks about pandemics, epidemics. Uh, it's the.
Mandates of government, and thi- this was written specifically because of the current situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is. It's on the far left, right after the, under the word strikes. Epidemic, it did epidemics. I'm sure there's something new that we haven't found, but we will.
Doesn't have locusts listed.
Locust.
Uh, so I, I don't know, I just saw that and.
So the, so the, the, uh, thank you for pointing that out. Um, you know, this, this is your kind of generalized force majeure kind of provision, which just be, it basically means uh uh act of God. So. Yeah, I mean, th- there is a chance, I mean, what we, we are in, I've, I've not used a force majeure um provision. Really before this year, you know, there's always um, you know, trade wars or something like that where we couldn't get the lumber to build the thing or something like that. This one certainly hits the nail on the head much more. So I, you know, we don't know, but yeah, I mean, as somebody mentioned earlier, you know, if we have other variants, you know, that closes down for six months. That absolutely could be something that stand in their way. You, you saw their letter or heard their letter on how big of an impact this had. Um, there is a chance that there could be something that's out of their control that that could impact this. Um, we, we don't know that and and I think maybe Bob wants to chime in on that.
I just want to make sure we, it's clarified that there are no excuses, literally. It says that right in top. Neither, neither landlord or the tenant's excuse for performing, and that's, if anybody's wondering what that meant. I could list all those things out, so it, you know, we're, if we sign this, we're enjoying the agreement and so is the YMCA.
Okay. So, so I only had one more thing, so, uh, Mayor, I appreciate you dipping back to me, but, but I, I was almost wrapped up. Well, um. I'm just looking through my list here. I, I actually think that was the last one. Um. So the second wave that are now included in, in the version that you've, that you have in front of you, which you'll get. Uh, are, are, I'll just quickly summarize. Number one, it's the timeline of June thirty twenty twenty three for submission of the applications for permits. And so that's a, a deadline that's put in there. Uh, the next deadline that was added in there is the phase one A construction deadline of December thirty first twenty twenty four. And then coupled with those is that if the grant is not extended. They will be responsible for that deficiency of funds as a result of that. And so those are the primary things that, that are in addition. And so the, the agreement that you have shows track changes. That start with the first wave of changes that was very recent that we went over, um, that talk about some of those city contributions. And so you'll see those very clearly in track changes. Then in addition, I made further track changes for the, for the revisions that I just talked about right now. And everything else is consistent with prior conversations on this topic. And so I'll probably just leave it there. I know there's bigger discussions to be had, but in terms of a, a document evolution, that's where we're at. Um, and those are any, those are the, just the changes that, that you would uh see different from before.
Okay, Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, just to, to clarify, the, the one about the contributions the city's making to one A now. That originally the Y was going to handle, is that going to be done concurrent with one B? So if we, if we do one B, we're, it's, it's sunk. If that is, if we put something into one A and doesn't happen immediately or whatever happens. From our perspective, we spent the money, we've done it, and then we go from there.
Yes, the, the only reason we're putting in those items for one B that we're going to be in one A is because we need that, those items to build one at one B.
Okay, so, so really.
Otherwise, otherwise they have to come in when they do one A, they have to come in and rip up our one B.
So, so going forward, in, in, in our budget. We've got now one, one B plus those elements of one A that we agreed to cover. Are now in our new budget for two thousand twenty three or two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty four, I guess.
Correct, so currently the uh construction cost assessment, when we went to the RCO grant application process last fall. Budget was three point one million dollars for one B. So it's going to be more than that based on the list that you have in, in Daniel's memo.
Okay, yeah, because you, you've got about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars there. I was adding them up, the, those approximate things you got there. So, yeah, it's going to get closer to three five.
Right.
Okay, so um. Jeff, where do we want to go from here with it?
Well, I mean, it's a, i- this, this is just a study session. This uh is going to come to full council. Um. I, I, I think it's on the agenda for, is it the eight or thirteen, twelfth, sorry, the twelfth of April? Or is it on the twenty second? I don't remember now.
I think it's, I, I think I put on the last item of the twenty second.
That's right, you did. That's what it was, in case it didn't make it. So it's currently on the March twenty second agenda on a new business last item, so. Um, really, it's, it's if there's any further questions or input, it's just a study session to make sure that we've answered the questions. And if we need to go back and have conversation with the Y, then now's the time to start that instead of waiting until we have a uh, the Y signing it, because i- if, if, if there's no objection, I mean, at some point, we need to get the Y to sign this before it comes to council. For consideration, because the Y has to accept it before the council needs to hear it.
And, and just two, two things to, to add into that. So the, the track changes that you've seen in concept and bullet form and email have been given to the YMCA and they are in agreement in principle. Um, they need to see the revisions, so we need to send that back to them for the exact text revisions. But again, th- they saw those bullets, they're basically pulled straight in. Um, and you know, if there are any questions from a legal perspective that you may have. Um, I would encourage I, either now or at any time, give me a call or shoot me an email. Um, personally not in attendance on the twenty second. And so I can provide any sort of um dialogue to any of you. Um, or, or however you want to do that in advance of then, should it continue on that agenda item. Um, so you just let me know how I can be of assistance.
So let's say, um. You know, I, I do feel that by June twenty twenty three, we're going to know if they're if they're well, if they, if they're well into the fundraising, since they have to meet a big, a benchmark by twenty twenty three in June. And so, um, instead of putting a, a, a benchmark six months before that uh of a way out. Similar to the same one. There's nothing stopping, uh, if, if, let's say, uh, January. Or November of twenty twenty two, we don't see that they've even fundraised. There's nothing prohibiting us from starting the process with someone else. Uh, leading up to the twenty twenty three deadline. So that, let's just say that they, you know, I, I'd hate to get a year from now. A year and two months and nothing happens, and then we're waiting for this date of June twenty three to be able to move forward. So if we don't put another clause in there, six months or eight, nine months earlier of a way out, which may be premature. Uh, I don't want to jinx it. There is, if we don't do that, there's still nothing stopping us from saying, okay, we're going to work with someone else. We're going to get this same type of thing all finalized. Uh, and if in fact, and there's nothing that prohibits us from doing that if we don't sign it. And uh, if in fact, they don't have it in June of twenty twenty three, we can, we can then sign a new agreement with someone else, but be working on it up until then if we think it's not going to happen. Is that correct, Daniel?
I mean. Could you talk to somebody? Sure. I, I would not recommend that you pre-negotiate a contract while you're in a contract with somebody else for the same work.
No, but I'm saying, let's say it's, let's say it's February and they haven't even fundraised. Twenty twenty three, they haven't even fundraised.
I, so they have until June thirty twenty twenty three to submit applications. And then they have until they got to pay their contractors to fundraise. And they have diligent efforts and they could have somebody swoop in with two donations and you know, be able to pay for the first two phases. I, I don't know how they're going to do it. That's a ton of money, so, um, but, you know. Looking fo- four months in advance, six months in advance, whatever, and saying, we don't think you're going to do it, we're going to start to get this person ready. Sure, you could talk to somebody. I mean, there's nothing wrong with talking to somebody, but I think, you know, negotiating a contract. Anticipating their failure is going to uh rub them the wrong way and, and send a, a, a poor message and also, um. You don't know, I mean, you could spend a lot of time and money on something and they, they could submit everything. I mean, certainly the, the, the pre-apps and whatnot for these applications, they take time. And sure, you, you, you may know at some point that, that it's fe- not feasible, but um that we have a date set up for everybody to walk away and pre-negotiating um does not seem prudent to me.
And can I follow up with that real quick before we jump, go further? So just, just remember that HBL has already, and the city have already gone back and forth quite a bit on the design. And by the time we get to, let's just say, February of twenty twenty three. The city will likely have already completed the full design and permitting of phase one B. Maybe we'll be under construction. Hopefully, we'll be under construction. So for HBL to get to the point where they need to submit documents. And, and let me just back up. One of the things that we have to do for phase one B construction is we have to do the binding site plan. I know it's on their list, but if we're going to truly get our, our phase one B done first, we have to get the binding site plan done. So really, it's not going to take much of an effort, in my opinion, for HBL to get from where they are today to final, not to final design, to d- design it to a level where they can submit those applications. So I, eh, they might not touch the design until February of twenty twenty three and still easily be able to submit it by Jan- June thirty twenty twenty three.
Thank you. Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, as, as we go forward on this, uh, we're, we're kind of uh basically conceding a two-year slip on phase one A by means of a uh, a legal agreement. Uh, it seems to me that concurrent with this, we should basically have our communication house in order. Called, there's a lot of people that were really fired up about this thing two years ago. I remember it quite well. Some of us remember it very well. And I, I think if the story is put forward in a timely manner and an honest manner. Called, it really was an act of God, okay, uh, that caused this. And, and here's, and, and just straight up, hey, here's where we're at, here's where we think we're going to be done. And yeah, it's going to require some, some home run events, okay? But uh, I, I don't think we should uh hide it. I don't think we should uh, um. Guild it either, call, make it seem too simple, okay, because it's not. Uh, it seems to me there's going to have to be a concerted effort to put this story out in the community in a fair, reasonable, understanding. Kind of a calm way to do business, but I think it's very, very important.
Okay. Okay, any other, any other final questions? Okay. Feel free to uh. You know, email Bob if you do have questions and then we can, you know, maybe gather them over a course of three days and then ask Jeff and Daniel those questions, just to kind of group them together. Uh, yes, Bob?
Can I request just a couple minute break just to get some fresh water?
Yeah.
Great.
All right, we'll come back at four ten. Okay, we're resuming the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of March eleventh. Uh, we wrapped up the YMCA uh discussion. And then we have the visitors. Uh, the Borgan Building Lease Agreement, uh Chamber of Commerce, uh lease uh agreement that we're working on. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to uh Bob. He's been working with Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I presume everybody's had a chance to, to read the uh memorandum I sent out. I uh, I sent the copies of the, of the previous and current lease, just for your reference, in case anybody had questions about those. And I, I'll, I'll just go through the other items as well, but there are some uh, some items of direction we need from the council. And I'll just start out with the, the first one. Uh, we haven't discussed this with the chamber. But we need to determine if we really want to continue having two visitor centers. The second one obviously being located in the Scandi House. And I sent some information that showed the, the visitor numbers. And I'm not suggesting anything, I just wanted to point it out that, that it's not that typical or common to have two visitor centers in a community. But that said, you know, if your council wants to continue that practice, that's fine. I just wanted to mention it. Uh, so that's the first point. Um, then the other stuff is I, the things that we've agreed upon between the chamber and the city that, that we agreed to discuss, not necessarily on these items, but item one is the, was the pandemic rent freeze. The second one was the duration. The third was having a clause about the sale of property. Uh, the fourth one, it's, they already recognize is equal employment opportunity, they already comply with that law. And then the bigger one obviously was the rent. They agreed that they, we were proposing the adjustment was fine. They just haven't agreed about the actual amount. We haven't come to agreement on that. And then of course, the rent adjustment, uh, which I spoke to uh Warren and a couple of their representatives. They understand that there should be some type of CPI adjustment as well for anything going forward after the initial uh year is set. Then uh, you got a copy of the, the chamber. They had responded to some of these issues and you should have a copy of that as well and go through that if anyone needs that. And then the, the bottom of it, it is a summary again, and what we really need to, now another council direction on is the in cash versus uh in kind portion of the rent. Which we're, we're proposing to be split equally between the two. And then we need to decide if, obviously, if we're going to either continue to have the visitor center or not. And then that will also be reflected in the eventual rent that would be paid, depending upon how you want to do that. The items we necessarily need council direction on, I want to bring it to your attention. Uh, the uh lease agreement calls for the chamber at its sole cost and expense to maintain the premises. Primarily the inside of the building in good state of repair. This does not include any capital items, which I pointed out in the, in the item below that, which is the equipment itself. And uh, we're, we're responsible for, for the uh the roof and the HVAC equipment. And uh, so it's a natural life cycle of about twenty to twenty-five years, you know, coincidentally, the, the roof is at its natural life. Uh, we got it in the twenty twenty one budget. And further, if the funding allows, when we do the roof, we could include the HVA system as part of that roof replacement. But we'll see how that, how that money, uh, how far we can stretch it this year. And then landscaping, including uh plant maintenance, that should be the city's responsibility. Uh, I'm going to ask Jeff to have his staff place that on the list of properties that are crews maintained. Then we can go from there. So I'll entertain any questions first about what I just spoke about. And then we can get into the items that we're really seeking council direction on and discuss those. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, when you get into the discussion about the specific items, could you pull those up, Bob? I didn't get a hard copy, so. I'm gonna need to see them on the screen, please.
Certainly.
Councilmember Markley.
Um, yes, thank you. So the question of whether or not we should have two visitor centers. I know one of the benefits to keeping one at the chamber, you, when I go to visit a new city, I, I usually look up, I, I Google their Chamber of Commerce and see if there's a visitor center, you know, if I want to find out more information. I don't think I'm the only one that does that, so I don't know that there's, um, that it would be a good idea to remove the visitor center portion of that, that building and, and then some people come specifically to go downtown and then as they're walking, they, you know, they see the, the one in the Scandi House. So I think, I think we need to keep both. That, that's my opinion. I think both would be beneficial.
Thank you. Councilmember Abersold.
Yeah, I, I concur with that. Um. I also visit visitor centers when I travel to cities. Um. I think that having two is good, uh, especially the one down on the waterfront. Because we do have a lot of boaters that come to the community during the summertime and they don't have transportation. So if they want to come off their boat, uh, depending on where they're docked in the harbor. Um, having a waterfront-based visitor center, I think, would be beneficial.
uh depending on where they're docked in the harbor, um having a waterfront based visitor center, I think would be beneficial. Um I do think that the one at the chamber um isn't the best in the most convenient manner for people coming off the freeway. Um but that is what it is. My question, I guess, would be is I I really don't know that I would see a need for the waterfront visitor center during the winter months. Uh so is there a potential where we could have access for it for five or six months during the nice weather, the boating seasons? And then utilize, let someone else utilize the building. I know, I think Harbor Wild Watch is already down there in the Scandi Building. Um but could that be an option or?
Well, they don't operate the visitor center Wild Watch. I I uh I don't think they do it much in the winter because it's volunteer based, or if they do, it's very small. But that one room, I mean, even the Wild Watch's lease actually has the visitor, the um volunteers helping the Wild Watch, actually. So um it's just a small room. So there's, I don't um I'm I think that would have to be a separate issue of that because we're talking about a different building. So um
Yeah, the other thing I might point out, Mayor, is there there's a there's a distinction between the two buildings. The chamber obviously is is a service organization for the community, which is great. Uh the the Harbor Wild Watch is actually would be considered a more or less a destination. People are aware of that. They want to go there. So it probably tends to draw more visitors into the visitor center only because of its outreach programs and things that people can actually do there.
Wow, and it's also right there. I mean, we we took the hedge away years ago, so it was so it was more noticeable, but
More visibility, much better visibility, correct?
Right, right. Councilmember Heinz.
Along that same line, the the data on page twenty four, particularly the the Scandi House visitor uh data, does that include people that walk through the door to go to Harbor Wild Watch? And or to get information at the visitor's center?
I believe it would. My wife used to volunteer there, and I think they, when you walk in, the first person that greets you is the volunteers.
Okay.
The first, the person that would greet you would be a volunteer for the visitor's center. And to get to Wild Watch, you have to go through. It's kind of a walking museum.
Okay, but 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 the but the head count here is strictly people who came through the door to get visitor information or to be in the visitor's center.
That's that's how they're counted, yeah.
In the building.
Okay, got it. Okay, so it truly is delineated.
It's all inclusive. There's only one door, one main door of Wild Watch. Okay, so I think anyone walking in there would be a head count.
Perhaps a different way of putting it that they like they walk in, they accounted as a visitor. They may or may not visit Harbor Wild Watch piece. We're not familiar with those numbers, so there might be distinction there, but we don't know that. These are the ones that reported us as visitors at as part of the visitor's center. And then, of course, they're included in the trip of the center. I think just because they don't split them out.
Okay, because the last time I was in there with the grandkids, I think it was two thousand sixteen or something like that. And we weren't entering in visitor information at all. We just walked through the door and went to the Wild Watch exhibits of the everything. So if we're counted, I want to subtract me and my my grandkids. We we weren't there for the information, guys. We were there for the wildlife, okay? Uh but no, it is a problem with the data, and I think you see it as you as you look at the data. Um the other thing that's interesting, I think uh Councilmember Ebersol uh hinted to it. And that is during the winter time, uh the chamber is ahead in the first quarter and the fourth quarter of the uh uh downtown the Scandi House. And you see it in the data, okay? Um for example, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Um the uh down there, they're very, very, they're very competitive on Judson Street, okay? Uh so I think there is definitely a a seasonal element to this that would suggest, yeah, you you want the two capabilities, uh one on Judson Street and one downtown uh to to handle that particular situation.
Good observation. Thank you.
Okay.
Also, also along those same lines is parking. Uh if you go downtown in the summertime and you're gonna go there just strictly for information, the first thing you gotta do is find a parking spot. Okay, unless you just had to be walking through. Whereas at Judson, when I pulled into the Department of Commerce there, I've had no problem whatsoever getting parking on Judson, okay? I just pulled up, walked in, and that was it. So it's another thing in, I think, in favor of maintaining Judson as a second visitor center.
Okay, great. Councilmember Jensen.
I think all of these points are really great, and it just makes me think um that from my understanding, the Scandi House isn't even open every day, especially in the winter. I think they're open, it does a couple days a week. And so that kind of makes it nice having the chamber because if if somebody really wants some visitor information, the chamber at least is open, you know, five days a week during normal business hours, so folks can go there. So I do see that, I do see the benefit of having both.
Okay. A couple things I might add on. You know, we even though we uh didn't have to pay for certain things, we actually have. They they, we didn't have to pay for their doors and there was, they wanted new doors uh two or three years ago that were twenty two hundred dollars, and we did pay for the new doors. We do want to make sure, you know, there there probably the probably the space is not divided fifty percent for visitors. The the chamber probably uses more than fifty percent of it for the for their own operation. And um when someone's not walking and we're just gonna kind of, we were kind of assuming it just divided fifty fifty to make it simple. But also, if someone's not in there, um if someone's not visiting, they're probably doing work for the chamber, we have to realize. Also, we we do need to make them show that it's a visitor's center. If I've I've gone to their website, um there's nothing on their website that shows that there's a visitor's center there. It says chamber. If you Google, if you Google the Chamber of Commerce, it never says visitor's center. The only thing I've found found that it's a visitor's center is actually in front of the building. Um it also took me two years to get the chamber to put our logo on their website as a sponsor, two years. And yet we're a big sponsor. So uh I corrected their map that they're working on because they weren't gonna put where City Hall was. They weren't gonna put visitor's center. So we 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 really need to get them to show that they are truly a visitor's center. If if they don't show it on their website, um that's not helping if we're gonna give them half the write-off. So we need, I think we need a bit more information collected from them as to when people come in. If we're if we're gonna give them fifty percent off the the going rate, I think we need to know that it's it's advertised as a visitor's center and that they, you know, show us a little bit of data and activate it as a visitor's center outside of just the name in front. Um Councilmember Abersole.
Yes, uh yeah, I am on their website. I do see Gig Harbor Visitor Center um on their website. It's got both the addresses for both locations. Um it's got
Go to their, go to their uh, you went to their website?
Yeah, I'm on Gig Harbor Chamber, and then you go up to the top where it says Visitors.
Yeah.
That drops down and it it's got a picture of the building.
Okay, last week it didn't have it. So that's good.
Yeah. And uh it's got Discover More Gig Harbor Guide. I I would argue that I don't feel we have enough signage on our streets directing the public as they come into town where these buildings are at, because uh at least the one on Judson, it's it's yeah, it's right there on the street, but if you're not knowing what you're looking for and there aren't signs directing you, you got all these other things going on and people crossing roads and stuff like that. It it for me, it doesn't feel like it, you know, it's got an arrow that says go right here, whereas in a lot of other places, their visitor centers are right off the freeway. You you don't have to go very far.
They're well signed. Yeah, they they actually take you right to it. They've got
Okay, well, maybe we can help them with this. So you typed in the word visitor's center.
No, I typed in Gig Harbor Chamber, and I went to their website, and at the top it says Business Directory, Shop COVID nineteen Members, Visitors. Then drop, that brings a dropdown and says Visitor Center, and that brings you right to a a webpage.
Okay. It takes you to the the house at Scandi.
No, it shows me a picture of, well, there's several pictures. There's a
Oh, there is.
Scandi. Then there's an old building of the Scandi Building.
Good.
Then there's the the Visitor Information Chamber building.
Okay, good. Okay, well, I didn't see that the other day, so I was like, wait a minute. Okay, good. Um I still, we, if you look at the data when people walk in, maybe they could collect a little more data of 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 the boxes that they checked, if you looked at that.
Okay, the uh the other item I want to get into, and Jeff, for somebody who's Josh F. Control, I'd need that second page brought up of the memorandum that I distributed. It's got the, I want to get into the rent discussion. That seems to be the other primary issue here.
I can pull that up for you.
Okay.
So also, in one of the old leases, we had said not to park right in front of their uh building to leave that open for visitors. That was in one of their older leases. Uh do you know if that's still in this one?
I don't recall seeing it.
It was in one of the past ones that to just park somewhere else, just not to occupy the spots that visitors would come in.
The chamber employees.
Yeah, yeah, I I always never parked right in front of my business. And um that's that was in the last one. So maybe we can just make a note.
Take a look for it, yeah. Yeah. The the first paragraph, it talks about the initial rate. And it shows the split. That's true. I'll try to explain that if anybody has any questions. And the second paragraph talks about the uh the issue that we did not, the city did not choose, we never invoked language to uh to increase the rent by the fair market value. So that hasn't been adjusted in the entire, I suppose, ten years. The third item, I I calculated showing what it would be if we were to look at a cumulative CPI inflationary adjustment from twenty eleven through twenty twenty. That's the third paragraph. Josh, you can scroll down a bit more now. The uh and I'll just say the chamber is not in dispute of any of that. As I mentioned earlier, they're also not necessarily in dispute about having annual in the in the new contract, an annual CPI adjustment, so that we can stay abreast of the market. What we're proposing, though, and I think it's very important, is that right now it's a fifty fifty split of the initial piece, and then the the chamber is given credit on their fifty percent for an additional half of that that's considered to be in kind for services for the for the visitor's center. I think, as Mayor's alluding to earlier, is that how much of this space does a chamber actually use for its own business functions versus what it would be using for in for the visitor's center? And you can, you know, you've got circulation within the building. You've got the common restrooms, you've got some other common areas. And what I think we need to do is to, you know, perhaps if if uh if you really want to get down to the exact science of it, would be to calculate how many square feet is actually devoted to visitor's center versus the chamber, and to take a look at a split there. But I also want to point out that the chamber is getting an additional fifty percent in kind credit. So right now, at the rate of two thousand dollars, they're actually paying in kind of fifty percent of that for the visitor's center. And then they're actually of the of the remaining fifty percent of that thousand dollars, they're actually paying five thou- five hundred dollars per month in cash, and the other five hundred dollars is an in kind credit to them. And what we're proposing is to consider removing that non-governmental in kind match that they're receiving. So it'd be a straight fifty percent for in kind as we sit now for the services rendered for the visitor's center, and the other fifty percent would be a cash for the exclusive use of that, some of that property for the chamber's business functions. Anybody have any questions about that or any any thoughts or?
Yeah, Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, could you go down just? Or, yeah, well. Uh keep going. Okay, go back up, please, the other way. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Slow down. Okay, a little bit more. Right there, under the rent section there. Uh I I don't have a problem with the the fifty percent off for the um you know, operating the visitor's center, but I I do not quite understand that fifty percent or that fifty percent off to non-governmental purposes.
We don't either. So that's why we were not going forward on that.
Okay, well, that's the part I I have a hard time understanding. I I think that get it get in the fifty percent off for the um operating the business center, that's fine with me, but uh I don't particularly agree with this fifty percent off to non-governmental purposes in quote quotation or in parentheses, chamber. So can you explain what that means, Bob?
Chamber purposes?
To non-governmental purposes.
Right, well, that that's the point that the mayor just mentioned. I I looked in both the leases, and there's no description of how that would be calculated or why. They would be getting a a half of their their payment, if you will, would be would be in kind. Uh the chamber attempted, I think, to address it in their letter. That's the last very, very last page of the report. But they pointed out that there's um if they were to look at the the chamber's costs, if you will, they would, they're somewhat less than the cities if we were to run the visitor's center ourselves, because we have a we have um some wage, uh I think, if I understand correctly, some rate wage requirements that we'd have to pay. But that's the second last paragraph of the letter on the first page is, it talked about the um hours of operation and so on and so forth. I think, and I don't know this, I I wasn't here, obviously, but I and I don't see it in the lease, but it does not explain the non-governmental purposes, getting another fifty percent adjustment on that half of the of the lease amount. I I'm not, I, there's nothing indicated in the file. There's nothing in the original lease either.
In fact, one reason why we didn't increase the rent for the last ten years is because the last lease that was prior to my, prior to me taking office, they never put that you had to look at the lease prior to it to make an adjustment every year. They neglected to put that, that you actually had to go two leases back to realize that we were actually supposed to look at it every year. Um so the the past release didn't even show that. So I think they're using
They're not, they're not disputing that, Mayor. Now, they they realize it's gotta be adjusted, and they're willing to bring up the market rate, if you will, to to observe a roughly two two thousand five hundred dollars per month. The question is how we're gonna uh obviously negotiate and agree on splitting that the costs. But you know, visitor's center versus the chamber.
Right. So yeah, uh to answer your question, Francis, we don't understand that either. That's why we're proposing just a fifty percent reduction. Councilmember Woo.
Yes, um so I I I think there needs to be some sort of adjustment in here, because if you look at the numbers, really, the Chamber of Commerce um doesn't have the visitors that the visitor's center has. The visitor's center in in two thousand nineteen, second quarter, which is, you know, uh the chamber had, what, four hundred and seventy seven visitors and the visitor's center had two thousand six hundred and fifty? So so I don't know where you want to adjust the funding here, but I I I'm, I have a hard time believing that fifty fifty is an appropriate amount to uh adjust, that that's an appropriate amount. It seems to me that it should be more um sixty forty um with a with a visitor's center and Scandi um bearing, having the sixty percent. Because there's just not the people that go in there. Um I mean, I I'm very much in favor of keeping it, but I I don't think fifty fifty is uh is quite fair when you look at it. And if there's not that many tourists in there, then I'm not exactly sure what the services they are providing. Um for two thousand nineteen, they had a thousand forty eight visitors and the Scandi House, I guess, had what, eight thousand?
But the the Scandi House was an aggregate total. But the the Scancy House was an aggregate total as was described earlier, so there was no breakdown of. How many of the people that eight thousand are for visitors are visiting the Harbor Wild Watch.
So take fifty percent of that, you still got four thousand and you got one thousand. And I I don't know what that breakdown is, but just take off fifty percent right off and you still have more people. In in the Scancy House. So I think some adjustment somewhere is warranted for sure.
What I would suggest is perhaps consider keeping it at fifty percent. For the chamber, fifty percent for the visitor center, but then then obviously discuss if you're interested in having. The non-governmental portion of that removed from the in kind for the chamber, so they're paying a cash. Of roughly twelve hundred fifty dollars per month rather than half of that in cash and half getting credit for for the in kind piece. I think that might be a better reflection of the use of the property. Uh, because you know, the visitor center takes up some room. There's a common space there for restroom. The the public can use the restrooms, it's advertised as such. And there's some other area there that I would call the reception area that visitors could could know about to uh to to uh. Take some pamphlets and so on and so forth and just refresh themselves there.
So.
Obviously, it's is a, is the chamber back offices and their and their regular offices and a conference room, which are not open to the to the visitors.
So there's a difference between the space that's used and the services provided is what we're talking about here, right? Yeah, I I can agree with that as well.
For sake of argument, yeah, you may want to take a look at it, just, you know, fifty percent for each each purpose and then go about how what do you expect for as far as payment from the. The chamber in real cash back to the city for the use of that space. Because frankly, you know, I know it's a, it's a cycle cyclical issue, but they've been there ten years and so roughly. I'm not sure when that roof was last replaced, but you know, we've got some some really involved expenses. That, you know, the roof, the HVAC, uh, anything else that we have to maintain on the outside as far as capital. But primarily it's those two and and they're uh, they're uh, they're expensive items. I think we should try to get back some more cash to help pay for those types of things.
Right, now, so you say, are, did you say that uh people are are allowed to use the public restroom?
Their public restroom, that's my understanding. That this happens to be shared with the chamber, that's my understanding too.
So does that mean we can have a sign saying public restroom?
I believe it does say that.
Without having to go inside the building, is my point.
When I was there, I believe I said, I saw that, yeah, it said public restroom. I'm not sure exactly where it is on the property. But for instance, you know, wayfinding sign, if you're having a public restroom like that, you normally would have it on the main street if you were passing by and then another one right at the property to reflect. With an arrow that it's right there in that building. I I can't say it's done that way, but if if there is a sign there, I would probably call it down there. I can double check that. They need to have one. It's a public restroom, you can sign it accordingly.
Right, Jeff, do you know if there's a sign? I mean, if we're, if we're gonna give them credit for a public restroom, then I think if. Our our public needs to know that without having to walk in the building.
I don't think there's a sign visible from the roadway. Um, and I thought the restroom was inside the building.
It is inside.
There's no restroom out, yeah.
It's inside the building, but I believe there's a sign on the outside of the building. It says public restroom. Not on the, it's definitely not on the road. I'll I'll give you, it's not, definitely not a pioneer too, so.
Right. I do know I've walked in the building many times and there's not anyone in the. In the visitors part unless you knock on the door of one of the other doors, so. Councilmember Barkley.
Um, yes, thank you. I I think you're right. There is a sign on the building, but not like anywhere from the road that would direct. People, you know, to go there to use the restroom, but um. I was just thinking of, you know, things that the chamber does in the way of. Uh, you know, advertising for the city. I'm not necessarily opposed to. Um, that split that you're talking, you know, revising that split and having, you know, it be sixty forty or seventy thirty or whatever. Um, amount you, you know, we decide on, but. You know, for an ex, for just for an example of of a way that they have been doing some extra work. You know, during this legislative session, they've been, they've been doing a lot of advocating on the city's behalf for bills that would be harmful to our. To our city, things that would increase taxes, things that might, you know, drive away people from. Coming here, you know, they really are all about trying to drive traffic here, increase our sales tax, you know, they they do a lot of other things. Besides just for their members that I've that I've seen, you know, being on the GRC, the Government Relations Committee um for over a year now with the chamber. There's a lot of things that they do um that that benefit the city, so. I, you know, whether the whether the number of visitors is really an issue versus what other benefits does the chamber provide to the city. We could talk about all that, but I think it's more than just about the visitor center. If you're, if we're gonna talk about what benefit do they provide. To the city and what revenue might they bring in to the city. Um, I think we should talk about both of those things and not just assume that it's just about the visitors. Because they 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 do a lot of things to advocate for for the city, the city of Good Harbor, not just their members, so. Just just what I've observed is I've worked with them.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Abersole.
Yes, um, I would concur with that. I know that they have allowed us to use their office. Um, for not, for a group that was trying to get some civic stuff done. Um, I'm looking at Google Earth right now and I'm on the street view and I'm not seeing any signs that say public restrooms. I don't know how old these pictures are. Um, but um, they look pretty co- or um. Current. Um, so I don't see any public bathroom signs on in in this. But I do believe that the chamber does do a lot for the city, um, parades wise and and tourism. Um, so I am very supportive of of the chamber, but uh, those are my, just my thoughts.
Thank you. And Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, um, I've never seen a public restroom sign and I don't particularly think that. We should force them to have a public restroom there. I mean, there's a lot of, city's got a lot of public, public restrooms, so. Um, I'm not a big fan of having us start advertising that they're building as a public restroom in it. And I guess to Councilmember Abersold and Markley's comments, I'd say that the, any. Uh, help that you see that is coming the city's way is an ancillary to benefiting. Their their main objective, which is to help the businesses. So it's uh, just a secondary benefit that. Some of those things may overlap that would actually benefit uh. The city itself. They're not going out of their way to benefit the city. They're going out of their way to benefit themselves, number one.
Councilmember Markley.
Um, yes, point taken. I don't know that I fully agree with that statement based on what I've personally seen, but. Um, any help that they bring to our businesses helps the city because it increases revenue for the businesses. Which then in turns increases, in turn increases the city's revenue, so I'll drop it right there. I'm not trying to advocate for the chamber. I'm just. I'm just trying to say that this is more than just visitor center numbers we should be thinking about when we're looking at these lease adjustments. Just just my.
Okay, so um. So where does that put us, Bob? Does that put us, I, we were considering. Fifty fifty, which I think puts it at about twelve twenty four, if maybe, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm not on the right page, but just from memory. If we do the forty sixty, that gets a little more, how does that go?
Well, again, I would propose that, so you're looking at that split versus perhaps the the cash versus in kind. Uh, the sixty forty won't won't make a big difference. The other one might make a little bit more of a difference on the actual cash you receive. Uh, because otherwise we're gonna have to take a look at the the actual uses and I don't know if we necessarily want to go there, but. I I, I think fifty fifty is reasonable. It's more about how much credit you want to give them for that. In kind for non-governmental portion. That's what I was suggesting earlier is perhaps uh, you know, doing a fifty fifty, but then. The fifty percent is in kind to the visitor center and then the other fifty percent is actual cash. Payment to the city for the rent, for the chambers uses.
But does that put it at the twelve twenty, are you doing the fifty fifty and then fifty again? You're not doing that, are you?
No, the the cash would be, uh, would, as we calculated, uh, which the chamber agrees would be the the actual value is um. Is two thousand four hundred forty eight dollars and one half of that would be one thousand two hundred twenty four. Being attributed to the chambers purposes and the other half to the visitor center. And then from that, what I'm suggesting is keeping it at those amounts, but then. Uh, having, asking the chamber negotiating so that they're actually paying a rent of one thousand two hundred twenty four dollars in cash to the city. With the other half being attributed as in kind for the visitor center.
Right, so as, in the same as you're using it. It's twenty twenty four or something and you're using it fifty percent basically for a visitor's guide, so we're giving you fifty percent off. Basically, something like that.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Are you looking for a motion?
We, we can, let me see.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest that because what you're doing is making a decision and it might be difficult if we can't negotiate that with the chamber. Perhaps maybe some type of a, of a concurrence or some type of a, you know, maybe it's in general, not a vote, but. You know, is it, would the city, would this council be supportive of me going back and telling the chamber, hey, excuse me, uh, you know, we're looking at this, we're looking at a difference of of. Bringing the cash portion of their rent up to fifty percent of the value rather than making it like, for instance, twenty five percent. Because half of that was going to be attributed to the non-governmental in time piece.
So we could just get a a not enough that we're going down the right direction. Bob and I was going down the direction of giving him. Fifty, fifty percent off of what the total rent would be.
Going there.
Okay, it's council, we we can hear for the others, but. Uh, Councilmember Abersold.
Yeah, um, I'm sorry, I was kind of looking at bathroom signs on our streets here. Um, can you, can you, I apologize, can you reinstate that?
Well, we're just trying to look for, uh, we're trying to go in the in the direction the council would want, and so we're kind of proposing, yeah, the building's worth twenty four hundred or so. With, you know, rounding, you know, it it's in this, it's written here. I'm not gonna go through every page, but it's worth about twenty four hundred retail. And they're using it like fifty percent, maybe a little less than fifty percent, but we would do it at fifty percent and we, so we. Make it so they pay half what the going rate is because they're operating as a visitor center too. So the rent would be around twelve twenty four a month. We're also gonna dump sixty eighty thousand dollars into the building, if not more. Just so you're aware, and that's one reason Bob pointed out, we need, we need some money back if we're gonna spend, put a new roof on this thing. Put a whole, a new heating system in this thing too. So that, we're just looking for support that we're going down the path that council. Uh, seems to want.
I would support that and then I would support in the future raising the rent after the pandemic's over.
Okay, we're also keeping the rent um at the five hundred dollars until we're in phase four. So, um, Councilmember Hines.
Uh, yes, I I I think that I concur with that, by the way. Um. And but just looking at the big picture, um. This isn't gonna come close to upsetting things like sports complexes and a few other things. Uh, I mean, what, this is, this is decimal dust, to be quite honest. Um, given that scenario, you know, yeah, we can go in with this, but I sure wouldn't stake my my career on it. Okay, called, we may have to back off, which is a nice way of saying, hey, if we get it, that's great. Uh, if we can't though, I I would not uh, uh, prompt a. Um, some sort of a serious uh disagreement with 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 the uh, the chamber. Uh, I I'm not sure it's worth the trip, let me put it that way, given the, given the magnitude of numbers that we're talking about here. Versus the big picture. So I'll stop right there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Francis.
How did, how did you uh, come up with the, what you believe to be the fair market value?
Bob worked on that. He worked, he he did a big comparison.
I I started out with looking at, uh, it it's hard to do because obviously I I'm not a real estate agent. We didn't hire a real estate agent or anybody else to take a look at, but I looked at some other properties. Looking at the going rate of commercial space, this is uh, obviously not class A, it's probably closer to class B space. And then you look at the the uh, the area and looking at the, the value for square foot. And they looked at that and they also looked at just the simple CPI. Did a comparison. It came out to be about the same. But uh, so I would propose rather than going through a a large study of the actual value based on the market, I. Proposed to the chamber that we would take a look at, looking at the CPI from twenty eleven when the, when the lease first started, if you will. All the way up through twenty nineteen and looking at CPI and just adding it each each uh incremental step of the every year, got a cumulative total. And then did the math that way and they they agreed with that methodology. They also saw the other one that on the market itself as far as the value of. Of a, you know, cost per or a value per square foot of office space.
Okay. Councilmember Abersold.
Yeah, um, Bob, there is what they call a comparative market analysis that all realtors um. Will do for the public and they'll have to do it for free. Uh, and Councilmember Denson can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But um, that might be a way to go to to find out that data. Uh, I would talk to a commercial realtor, of course, but.
Yeah, the chamber is agreeing with the methodology that uh, of the two that I proposed, that they looked at the CPI and they were okay with that. They're not, they're not disputing that. Uh, they're just, they're uh, obviously are going to want to uh, negotiate the actual cash value of their portion. For the chambers purposes. So I've got a base right now of um, of the five hundred dollars I'm paying currently, or actually the. A thousand dollars of the two thousand and that's split now with, between right now government or uh. Chamber versus in kind for the non-government piece for the visitor center and the other fifty percent was obviously towards the visitor center. You increase the value to twenty four forty eight, again, you'd split that and then you'd, the decision has to be made now, the new base that we're looking at. Is somewhere between a thousand dollars that they, you know, the value where it was current and now it's up to twelve. Um, twelve hundred and uh. Twenty four dollars. And so the actual cash, you know, I'm suggesting should be at the higher end of that, the twelve twenty four. And the chamber obviously is looking at a cash value right now that they're paying a five hundred dollars. So it's a, it's a, you know, it's a fairly large difference per month. Uh, but my argument would be, or my my rationale would be that we've got to pay for a new roof. And eventually HVAC and you can, you can do the math, but if you give it that, if you're, for instance, getting a thousand dollars a month. For actual cash rent, that's twelve thousand dollars a year. It would take several years to recover the cost of the uh, the roof and then the HVAC. And not that we're gonna recover just from the chamber, because obviously you gotta take a look at the useful life of of those facility of the uh, of the uh. The uh, roof as well as the uh. The uh, HVAC. And also, we, you know, we've agreed to maintain the property. That's gonna require some some city staff time. That's already part of it. We're not. You know, that was not reflected in the value. It uh, it obviously was reflected in the terms and conditions that we negotiated, that we carried over from uh. The twenty eleven lease to the twenty sixteen lease.
Right, I think, they've had ten years at five hundred dollars a month, which is six thousand a year and their, you know, their. Revenues are over two hundred, about two hundred thousand a year or so. I think, I think twelve twenty four is still very fair. Okay, so uh, Bob, uh, go ahead and seems like most people have agreed with you with the what you've come up with.
It, you know, it will, will be fair. Obviously, the chamber brings a lot of uh, a lot of services to the community. They do a lot of great things. Uh, it's a very good, strong, thriving chamber. They had a little bit of a setback during the pandemic. It's, everybody could acknowledge that most. These business organizations have had, but I do think, you know, looking around the region. It's the Gig Harbor Chamber is stronger than most of their category and that's a good thing. So I'll try to reflect that as well. Uh, as we begin these uh, are in to take these negotiations again. So thank you very much for your time.
Great. Okay, uh, thank you. Anyone in, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 We got out in time too, two, two minutes early.
Bye, everybody.